This is a public hearing in the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance empowers this board to hear references from the city council, applications for variances and special uses, and appeals from the decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, we will either make a final determination or send a recommendation to the city council. Present tonight are board members Barry Beth Burns, Scott Gingold, Matthew Rogers, and I am Lori Summers, your current chair. Therefore, we have a quorum. Also present from city staff is Melissa Klotz. This is a formal hearing and we have rules that govern our proceedings. Our most important rule is that only one person may speak at a time without interruption. It is not just civility, but it is necessary to accurately record our proceedings. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have an opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our normal procedure is that we hear first from the staff on the documents in the file. We will then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or repellent. After the applicant or repellent has completed their initial submission, any person who has a legal interest in real property located within 500 feet of the property that is the subject of the application or appeal may then present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. Next to others who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. When all opposing testimony and other statements have been received, the applicant or repellent will be given an opportunity for rebuttal or a closing statement. Board members may ask questions of anyone offering testimony or statements at any time. All testimony and statements will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, we ask that you limit your testimony or statement to your own personal knowledge. When you testify or make a statement, please tell us your name and address and print your name on the pad that was provided outside. Because we do not have a court reporter, it is imperative that you speak at a microphone so that your testimony or statement will be recorded. We are audio and video recorded in this room. When all of the testimony, other evidence, and statements have been received, we will close the record and begin our deliberations. Just to note for the record, member Weinberg has also joined us this evening, so that continues our quorum. And looking at our first order of business, we have approval of the meeting minutes, review and approval of the meeting minutes from our May 15 hearing. And just as a general note, I like to have approval by, I prefer to have approval by members that were present, and I don't think we have a quorum of that at this point in time. But I think it sounds like there are several amendments, so we'll just make those and then we can, that will probably be enough for us to have a vote at a later date. I had a few, so I guess I'll just start with those. On page one, just a quick note on the second paragraph under Church Street, it was Coca-Cola, I presume? And page, at the bottom of page two, the second paragraph up, I would just note at the end of that paragraph that ends with "built without a permit," that Chairman Summers concurred. And on page three, at the first paragraph, if we could have just a clarification regarding, that I recommended, given the discussion that was being had, that the applicant might want to consider a continuance to review possible amendments. Barry Beth, did I hear you had something?
Yes, I'd like to make a clarification to page two, the third paragraph up from the bottom. Mrs. Burns asked why couldn't the porches be rebuilt? So add "couldn't" and take out "should."
Does anyone else have any other corrections or comments? I guess Scott, you're the only other person here. You're all set? Okay. Then if that's okay, I think I'm just going to table that for now, and we'll review those corrections and take a vote on that at another time. The next item on our agenda is an item of old business for 1716 Dodge Avenue. Just a reminder to anyone who speaks that you still are under oath from our previous meeting, and anyone who hasn't spoken to us previously regarding this case and desires to, please, I will try to keep track, but please be sure to let me know. And is there any other information from city staff that we need to have regarding this time?
Just the revised plans and memo that are in the packet.
Good evening. I already swore him in last time, though. Sorry, didn't I swear?
He did last time. I can do it again if it's necessary.
Yes, I did. I only have to, it's a continuing, at least, we can get legal to opine, but as long as I've been around, it's always been a continuation of the previous oath. So you are reminded that you are under oath in it, but if we could have you just state your name again, just for the record, to be sure that we're clear on who you are, and then please explain what has happened since we last talked to you.
My name is Burke Greenwood. I'm the architect, working with Socially Responsible Ventures on the property at 1716 Dodge. The changes that really occurred, previously there was a switchback stair that accesses the second floor of the porch. The switchback was then occurring within the setback, and there was concern about the building within the setback and the appearance. So we looked at different options, as well as outcomes from our conversations. We looked at possibly running the stair up, as we discussed, from front to rear, except for the problem is, if you look on the side elevation, we have a roof line that really restricts the head height for a front door. So the chosen option, or probably the easiest one, as well as the most cleanest one, is to really rebuild the stair as it currently is in terms of its run from, you know, the rear of the lot, or the rear of the property that brings you up to the front porch. I did include some pictures. I'm not sure if you had these last time, to kind of show that strange configuration where the front door of the second-floor apartment is actually at the top of that stair run. That might help understand the way that the existing building works, and then in the rebuilding of the porch, we'll just really follow more or less the same footprint. We did extend the width of it on the front, as discussed last time, to run the full width of the building. The reason for that is just kind of the appearance from the front facade. The setback to the north side, if we adhered to the existing setback, would take two feet off that porch, which would make it a little bit lopsided if you look at the front elevation. So those are kind of the changes. I don't think that, the biggest one obviously was to the stair and running up along the side of the building and not putting that switch back that brings you back down to the front.
So, and I note the overhanging issue, which I actually hadn't noticed last time we were discussing. Am I reading the plans correctly in that where, where the dormer does stick up right now, and you're taking out the window, is that, is that in the existing washer? The, I'm going to step back a second. We're not changing the plan, so the restroom, that there is exactly where it is right now, correct? And the window that we're removing, according to this drawing, is currently in that washroom there? Okay. So the only conforming, the only way to get into that dormer and access the house would have been to actually take on the endeavor of moving the restroom, so.
Or extending the dormer.
Or extending the dormer. So those kind of two different levels of construction would have been involved. Okay.
Correct. That's part of the reason why it was determined to turn the stairs, because that becomes too extensive.
is a confirmed or whatever, approved two-flat? I'm not really sure how exactly they word that here, but I know that you, like, if you were going to add like a second residence on the second floor of your house, you have to get approval for that. I'm not really sure what they call that, but.
It does have legal conformity as a two-flat.
Okay. That's what I'm looking for. Okay.
The extent of the renovations, only the exterior stair?
Correct. There's the exterior stair, and there's an addition of the window.
Dormer.
Excuse me?
The dormer.
Well, no, there's a, on the ground floor of the porch, there'd be a new window put in where they're removing the existing enclosed front porch.
So we're going from, we're going from this to that. Yeah. Are you going to be re-landscaping the front and doing, re-landscaping the front or doing anything with the fencing and that sort of thing as part of your, as part of kind of rejuvenating the front of the structure here?
Well, I know, I knew that the owner wants to pull up some of the excess concrete. So if you look at the existing site plan, you can see a lot of concrete in the front, so it would kind of clean that up, just access to the front door. But in addition to that, you're asking?
Yeah, I just wasn't sure. I mean, obviously, there are a few plantings, but those will probably be disturbed by the construction process, so I wasn't sure if there was any, any plans to, any plans to.
Replant those two.
To replant, to replant or plant, you know, do new plantings as part of the porch construction.
There wasn't at this point.
Okay.
I don't think that's anything that he would object to if he requested that.
And the fence along the street line is proposed to stay, even though there's a fence further back?
Correct. Yeah.
So there will be new footings for the stairs and a starter concrete step?
For the porch steps?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Just to mitigate rot.
Yeah, yeah, it'll follow concrete footings to the appropriate depth, and then I won't go too much into details, but I can answer them if you, if you need it. So it would be built structurally with six-by-six treated lumber and concrete piers that go 42 inches down on footings, et cetera.
So you are demoing a lot of this concrete that we're seeing in order to get the footings in?
Yes. Well, there will be some demo of the existing concrete and would probably salvage the areas that we don't have to demo.
What's in the basement?
That's empty. Furnace space and a bit of storage.
Am I right? Are you good? Do you guys have any other questions? Did you have anything else you wanted to add before we close and begin our deliberations?
Not really. I think, I think we're, you know, we're fine with what it is here, so hopefully.
Okay.
The intent is really just to improve what the existing condition is in terms of structurally, as well as aesthetically, so.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And with that, we will close the record and begin our deliberations regarding 1716 Dodge Avenue.
I'd just commend the applicant for addressing the concerns that we raised at our last meeting, I think, pretty straightforwardly. And it does seem like the revised plan is pretty much a replacement of dilapidated stairs and porch, and more aesthetically pleasing, both from the street view and the side, and a whole lot more functional.
I agree. Well done.
Okay. Then if there's nothing else, we'll run through the standards. I would just note myself that I do appreciate your effort to consider our concerns and run through, and manage to even point out an issue with our, our thoughts that we didn't even, we hadn't even run across ourselves, so it is very, very helpful. All right. Running through the standards then for major variation, and there's actually two technically here for the side yard and for the front yard for the porch renovation. Stare number one, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. It appears that, given the fact that we are taking an enclosed porch and replacing it with an open porch of improved integrity and aesthetic, that if anything, it should help with the light and views from adjacent properties. So I believe the standard has been met.
I agree.
Agree.
Stare number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning As noted in a previous discussion, the property as it stands is already over, is already over the front yard setback, and this endeavor is to improve the front of the property and the existing porch despite that condition. So I believe this standard has been met as well.
Agree.
Agree.
Stare number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. I think we've looked at, A, the location of the existing structure with regard to the existing front yard setback. We've looked at the fact that the structure is an existing two-flat, which has its second egress at the rear, so we are limited in our ability to move the stair to the rear of the property. And we've also looked at aspects related to the specific house as it currently stands and options to alter it further. So to the extent possible, this, this property is peculiar, and this is the extent to which we are able to, to work with it. So I believe this standard has been met as well.
I agree.
Stare number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. Again, the existing, existing porch area is well over the setback, so that would offer a particular hardship to be required to maintain that, that portion of the property. Furthermore, this allows for a better structure and safer structure to be provided to the upper level, which is required, which requires this ability to go into the front yard setback. So I believe the standard has been met as well.
Yep, agree.
Stare number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. As previously stated, this is more of, this is more of an opportunity to improve the aesthetic of the property and to make the property safer. So I believe this standard has been met as well.
I agree.
Agree.
Stare number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. Although there may be some far older historical reasoning to the hardship regarding the two-flat status, I don't believe that's anything created by the current owner or in more recent times. So I believe this standard has been met as well.
Yep.
Agree.
Stare number seven, the requested variation is limited to the minimum change necessary to alleviate the particular hardship or practical difficulty which affects the property. And again, regarding the items noted for the peculiarity of the property and the discussion that we've had, we've certainly endeavored to locate that minimum change necessary, and the applicant has been agreeable to do so. So I believe we have met, we have found that, and that standard has been met as well.
Agree.
With that, is there a motion regarding this? I would, if it's okay, like to see a comment regarding the changes to the hardscape at the front of the property, the improvements that are proposed here. In our, I know it's in our documents, but in our documents doesn't really necessarily mean as much as it should sometimes, so I'd like to see the reduction in the hardscape at the front that's proposed as well.
In the matter ZBA 12ZMJV 0034 regarding 1716 Dodge Avenue, I would move that we approve the requested variations, provided that they be in compliance with the testimony and paperwork submitted herein, and that the applicant pay special attention to reducing the hardscape on the front of the property to the best of their abilities.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion is carried unanimously, so good luck with your project. The next item on our agenda this evening is 1002 Asbury Avenue, and we have not heard this case yet, so we'll read it into the record first.
Mike Hauser, architect for Amy Michael, property owner, applies for major zoning relief to construct a one-car attached garage and convert an enclosed stair yard obstruction to habitable area. The applicant requests a rear yard setback of three feet where 30 feet is required, zoning code section 6828A4, and a two-foot interior side setback where five foot is required, zoning code section 6828A3. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Submitted with the case and placed as documents on file is the variance application submitted May 9, 2012, standards form, zoning analysis, plot of survey, site plan, letter from applicant regarding standards, interior floor plans, elevations, image of property, spark draft meeting minutes from May 30, 2012, as well as two letters of support and a map showing where those residents reside in relation to 1002 Asbury.
Could anyone who wishes to speak with us, please be sworn out at this time? Use your hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. If you could give us your name and address, please?
Sure. My name is Mike Hauser. I reside at 1715 Chancellor Street in Evanston. This is for the property at 1002 Ridge Avenue.
And could you describe the project for us?
Ridge or Asbury?
Asbury.
I'm sorry, Asbury.
Oh.
Sorry about that. I'm the architect for the, for Amy Michael, the homeowner and resident at the property. This is a two-flat, and part of the project will be deconverting it to a single-family residence. It will be her residence with her husband and daughter. The shape of the lot is obviously inconsistent with much of the R1 zoning in Evanston, and it's created a situation where if we were to do anything to modernize the building, we're going to have to deal with the inconsistent, or the illegal zoning that we have, namely the rear yard setback, which is 30 feet, and we have more on the order of 12 foot eight to the rear stair tower, and the side yard setback, which we have one foot nine and a half. With the deconversion to the two-flat, or to the single resident, single-family residence, we have the opportunity to lose the stair in the back and use that for the, for internal space for the, for the modernization of the house. And that's something that was of immediate concern to deal with the zoning. The future project would be to modernize, to remove and, and replace the, the carport structure to the south, to the west of the property. This is from the, this is a pretty dilapidated utility space that has been framed into a, into the rear stair tower, probably with no, no structural analysis done on it, and for us to get a covered parking spot, this would have to be dealt with. We've looked at a couple different opportunities or situations where we could get a, get covered parking on the park, on the lot, but this is really our best bet, given that this is where the parking is now, and the neighbors would like to see, would like to see that dealt with and are in support of the project. And the neighbors would like to see that dealt with and are in support of the project.
Just to clarify for starters, one thing that I heard you say, you talked about, did I hear you talk about phasing?
This...
This, I'm a little bit confused on that aspect.
Yeah. This is probably a two-phase project, but rather than come in for the zoning relief on the rear stair tower and then come back for the zoning relief on the carport, we thought we'd address them both at the same time.
Okay. Well, so are there any issues in terms of timeline that they need to construct after the variance is approved?
There's no issues with that. Variance is stick with the property, so even if it's not decided to do the garage for another 10 years, that would still be fine.
In the meantime, would you be removing the carport? Does the carport rely on the stair structure for its structural support? Would you be removing the carport in the meantime, or?
We would. We'll be removing it as part of the first phase.
So it would be in between, it would be an open-air parking space?
That's correct.
On the plans, we don't see dimensions for the single-car garage. We only have, would you tell us? Is it correct?
It should be on the site plan, on drawing number one, on sheet A1.
Okay. Do you have any pictures of what this carport looks like?
I sure do.
I mean, aside from the Google One, unfortunately in the far corner. Oh, thanks.
Sure.
It's fine. I'm just going to run through a formality really quickly here. When you get back to the microphone, we're going to note that the applicant has shared with us two pages that include four copies of four-color photographs. Sir, did you take these pictures?
Yes, I took them this morning.
Okay. And so then, to the best of your knowledge, these pictures accurately illustrate the conditions that were in place at that time?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to call this applicant's A.
So, I'm sorry, it's a little hard for me to see, but so the sides of the carport and the back of the carport, is that open?
They're open, yes.
So it's really like two piers on the outside, and then it's attached to the house, and then there's framing for a roof with this lovely, you know?
Man, sir, yes.
Facia detail?
Yes.
It's a mansard carport, is exactly what I was thinking.
Beautiful. Thank you. Oh, there it is.
And it says, on one of my plans here, it says renovated stair structure. Is it, are we renovating the stair structure? Are we replacing the stair structure entirely?
We would be renovating it.
We're renovating?
Yes.
Okay, so it's...
So you're leaving all the framing?
So all the framing is...
The wall framing.
The framing is staying. That's correct.
Okay. So...
We'll be infilling the stair opening on the second floor, and then doing whatever we need to do to basically provide for the integrity of the structure.
Okay.
I'm sure the floors don't slope at all.
Okay, so we've got, basically, we're maintaining a connection to the outside with that, or to the, well, to the outside/future garage, but we're moving it upstairs, keeping the structure so the extents of that are going to be, the extents of the stair structure are exactly the same.
That's right.
The height is exactly the same.
Yes.
That's what I think. Okay. And to your knowledge, okay, the carport, okay, if, am I, I don't know if I'm reading this correctly, on the, I think, well, it's a marked-up sort of survey, but does that say that the carport is 14.5 feet right now, so that the 12-foot 6 will actually be slightly smaller then?
That's right. That's right.
Okay. Okay, I see the dash line now. Okay.
And you're not planning on changing any of the existing concrete leading to the parking space, or?
That's right. The curb cut driveway will all remain.
And to further the note that Melissa had stated earlier, we did receive letters and a map, and those letters are in support of the project, or those emails are in support of the project, and they are from the neighbors of the applicant immediately to the west and immediately to the north, so the two adjacent neighbors that are indeed greatly impacted by the visual. And I apologize, we kind of got copies of your stuff, so it's like a little bit here and there. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly that the proposed new garage has a flat roof too, right?
That's right.
I'm reading. Okay. They're kind of labeled, but we don't have the sheet names, so I can't tell if it's exactly what everything is supposed to be.
And it's not intended to use that garage roof, right?
That's right. No intent to use the garage roof.
Are there any other questions for the applicant at this time? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to us regarding the matter of 1002 Asbury Avenue? Just for the record, we'll note that we do not see anyone else in the room other than the applicant and their representative. So nobody else wishes to speak to us. Did you have anything else that you wish to state?
No. I hold my peace.
All right. Then with that, if everybody's done, then we will close the record and begin our deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thoughts, comments?
Objection to it.
No objection, you say? And with that, we will begin our deliberations for major variances for the setbacks, which in this case are for the rear yard and for the side yard. Standard number one, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. We have letters from both adjoining properties stating that they will appreciate this change. I see very little impact to either property, other than the visibility through from the property to the north, but they don't seem to mind, and it seems like the carport may be less desirable to them than the solid wall option. So I believe the standard has been met.
I agree.
I agree.
Standard number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. Essentially, this maintains the existing outline of structure on the property, if anything, reducing the technical footprint of structure on the property while improving the aesthetic and usability of the property. So I believe the standard has been met.
Agree.
I agree.
Standard number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. This property is an existing, has these existing non-conforming issues that are trying to be improved, so therefore I believe the standard has been met as well.
Agree.
Agree.
Standard number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. As previously stated, the existing conditions that are trying to be further improved are already past the setback locations, and it is certainly an effort by the city to maintain off-street parking, and the inability to improve that off-street parking would be a particular hardship, so I believe the standard has been met.
Agree.
Agree. Agreed.
Standard number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. As the representative stated, the owner currently on the property is looking to improve the property into a single-family residence for personal use, so I believe the standard has been met.
Agreed.
Agree. I agree.
Standard number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. The property has had this non-conforming situation of the steering carport location for quite some time, so I believe the standard has been met as well.
Agree.
Three.
Standard number seven, the requested variation is limited to the minimum change necessary to alleviate the particular hardship or practical difficulty which affects the property. We noted that the existing stair structure will stay in place and will not be, will not further affect neighboring properties. And we also noted that the proposed garage is actually a smaller footprint than the existing carport. So from this vantage, I believe the standard has been met as well.
Agree.
Agree.
I also would just add that they are not adding any additional concrete, but using the existing pad for the parking...
Driveway.
And the driveway for the garage.
Yes. So we've run through the standards. Is there a motion regarding?
I'll move. In the matter ZBA 12ZMJV-0038 regarding the property at 1002 Asbury Avenue, I move that we grant the variances, the setback variances requested, on the condition that the property be developed in conformity with the documents submitted and record developed.
I would second, also just pointing out that you said 10,002?
I thought I said 1,002. Sorry. Yeah, 1002.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried unanimously, so good luck with your project. And I think that hits the end of my agenda. Is there anything else for discussion this evening? Then with that, we are adjourned.